Okay, I want to thank the chamber for allowing us to speak tonight. We really appreciate that. My name is Joe Russo, I'm 52 years old, and I'm married to Stephanie Dedos Russo. Together we have three beautiful children, Kayla Marie, Kimberly Michelle, and Kelly Marie. Stephanie and I are both lifelong residents of Patterson. I attended Hattie Watts Patterson Jr., and I graduated from Patterson High School in 1983. Mayor Grogan and Councilwoman Turner are my classmates. We all graduated from '83. After my high school graduation, I pursued a Bachelor of Science degree and graduated from Nickel State University in 1989. I've been employed with the St. Mary Parish School Board for the past 29 years as an educator and coach. I have worked at Franklin Jr., Patterson Jr. High School, Patterson High, Central Catholic, and Burwick Park. At a very young age, I developed a strong desire to serve my community. I started out as a youth umpire and recreational leader. Laid in life with the help of some very good friends, I started a fast pitch youth summer softball program that immediately put over 160 Patterson kids in a well-structured positive program that is still in place today. This is an accomplishment that I'm extremely proud of, and I thank those individuals who are currently volunteering their time to continue this great program and other positive programs for our kids. Currently, I volunteer my time as a fireman and first responder to help my community in times of emergencies. I have also been blessed by the residents of Patterson for allowing me to serve you in the political arena for the past 16 years. Eight of those years, I have served as your mayor pro temp. I thank you. So why am I running? I'm running because I still have that strong desire to serve a community that has blessed me and my family in so many ways. I'm running so that I can continue to be a strong voice for all citizens of Patterson. I'm running because I have enjoyed working with the mayor and council, and I'm very proud of the accomplishments that have improved our city. However, we are not finished. With your vote of confidence, I will continue to pursue future goals and do my best in making Patterson a clean, a safe, and a productive city.
Candidate number two, Travis T.D. Dornell. Please state your qualifications and your top two priorities if elected, and how you would address them.
Good evening. I would also like to thank the chamber for putting on this event, and I would also like to thank all of the Patterson citizens for coming out today because I think this is one of the top priorities as I continue to run, and I'll talk to you about that. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I'm Travis T.D. Dornell, lifelong resident, 32 years of Patterson, Louisiana. In short, I went to Patterson Junior High School, graduated from Patterson High School in 2005, went on to Nickel State University to Harvard on the Bayou, received a Bachelor of Science in Child Family and Social Services, and briefly after that, in 2012, I graduated with my Master's in Psychological Counseling. Just some things that I do in the community. I teach United States History here at Patterson High School, and I want to give a shout-out to my kids because they scored second in the district this year. They went above the state average, and I think that's phenomenal, that's awesome, and it's a testament to how well our kids are doing here in the city of Patterson, Louisiana. In addition to that, I work for 360 Mental Health out of New Iveria where I do substance abuse counseling, mental health counseling, and things of that nature. Why am I running? First off, I want to tell you guys, four years ago, you invested in a scared 28-year-old kid, and I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve. I think that service is something that, it's almost like being a pastor. It's one of those things that you're called to do, and you just know that it's what you should do, and that's why I'm going to continue to run. First off, I said four years ago that I wanted to provide more things for the kids in the city of Patterson. Now, every January, we have Nickel State University, we have UL and other universities that come here to City Hall. They teach a lot of our kids how to do financial aid. They work with our kids, and they tell them about what they need to do to go on to college because we have a lot of bright kids from here who have potential, and not only the four-year college sector, but also community colleges and so forth. But before I move on, I also want to say thank you to Mayor Grogan, thank you to Councilman Russo, Councilman Rentrout, Miss Sandra, and also Mr. Mendoza because it's been a team effort. And I think one of the things that's key about being a city councilman is that we have to work closely with the mayor. We also have to work closely with the police department because we are there to provide counsel for those people. And please, I would like to ask you guys to continue to believe in me, and I'll serve you as best as I can. Thank you.
Candidate number three, John Rentrout. Please state your qualifications and your top two priorities if elected, and how you would address them.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out this evening and spending time with us and listening to us. I, uh, my name is John Rentrout. I'm married to former, uh, Dawn Vining Rentrout. We have two children that have blessed us with seven grandchildren, and we spend a lot of time with them. I was pleased to have run for city council eight years ago because Patterson has been so good to us. We graduated school here, all of our children graduated here. It's just a shame that our children had to move away to find something to do. With that being said, I wish they would have stayed here, had something to do here, but they had to move on. I, uh, went, ran a business for 34 years, my father and I, Rentrout Shell Service in Patterson, and then I left there after he retired, and I opened up my own business, John's Automotive Repair, and ran that for 14 years. God had another plan for me, told me to slow down, so something happened, and Dawn and I both retired. And right now, my sole goal is to represent all of the citizens of Patterson to the best of my ability. At this time, I would like to ask you all for your support, ask your families for your support, and would you all have a fine evening? God bless you all, and thank you very much.
Candidate number four, Lee Condole. Please state your qualifications and your top two priorities if elected, and how you would address them.
Good evening, good evening, chamber and everyone that's up here on today. I want to first thank each and every one of you all for signing the waiver that allows me to continue to be on the air, and I really appreciate that. My name is Lee Condole, and I am a husband, a father, a grandfather, and a pastor. And on this evening, I'm here to express why I have a desire to be on the Patterson City Council. I sincerely believe that I would be a major asset to the council due to my 19 years' experience in leadership, okay? Serving the community through outreach, started a ministry in two different cities, which we grew from the ground up, all right? On the radio continuously, and citizens' involvement. I feel the need to serve the community on a larger scale. I want to partner with the other council members who has made major progress in the city of Patterson in making decisions that, you know, that would involve people that want to visit our city, start a business, and also even raise a family here. I want to represent the city of Patterson as your next city council member because I will bring to the, to the board a different, but also beneficial perspective. I am a person who has a lot to give, and I have a voice. Amen, I would love to be a voice that would voice my opinion to represent you and the people and the city of Patterson. As your councilman, I will give you a 100, 100% working effort. I will carefully study as well as pray about the information placed before me, and also give what is best for the subject at hand. In being in leadership and a part of various organizations, I have also learned that the protocol of a board member. I know that it takes a majority for change to take place, and also, I also know that it also takes time, take, um, to make, and days to make decisions. And also understand that, I want you to understand that I sincerely believe that it's very important to be involved in our community organizations. One thing I'm, I want to work on, amen, is a continual development of business in the area, continue to support with that. And also, one of my things I would like to do is see a more of a policeman-community relationship.
Candidate number five, William Billy P.Q. Jr. Please state your qualifications and your top two priorities if elected, and how you would address them.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks again for coming out, chamber as well, and all the candidates. Uh, my name is William P.Q. Jr. Very few of any of you know me by William, you all know me by Billy. My mother and my wife call me William when they mad at me, but other than that, everybody else calls me Bill, Billy. As far as qualifications, uh, been in, run a multimillion-dollar division company for the past 18 years, manage quite a bit of barges, tugs, environmental services for, for this company. I review financial statements, I create budgets. Can you hear me better now? All right, it's all about that. I create budgets, uh, all business aspects of the company. Handshaking, I'm nervous. With that being said, I've also spent a tremendous time since I was 21 years old, I started working with the sheriff's office as a reserve officer. I have a great deal of law enforcement experience. I don't know everything about law enforcement, I'll be the first to tell you, but one of my goals as a councilman is to bond with the police department, be the person to go to, make the police department and the city council a whole, make the, understand, be a liaison between the two. Very, very important to me, dear to my heart. Very much integrity, honesty, trust. If I give you my word, I give you my word. And a handshake means a lot to me. It's a very, very powerful thing. The way the society is today, it's not a strong thing to a lot of people, but it is to me. And I ask you for my support, number 80, Billy P.Q.
Candidate number six, Sandra K. Turner. Please state your qualifications and your top two priorities if elected, and how you would address them.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank God for this opportunity that He's given me, and second, the Chamber of Commerce to host this event, and thirdly, all of you all that have came out to, to hear our, hear the candidates. Um, I'm Sandra Keys Turner. I'm married to Ronnie Turner, and we've been married for 34 years. God blessed us with three wonderful children, two beautiful grandchildren. Um, I'm employed by Patterson State Bank and have been for 28 years. I'm the customer service manager there and assistant vice president. I attend Good Hope Baptist Church. I've, uh, I presently serve on the missionary board, the deaconess board, and the church financial board. My involvement in the community, I, to, to save time, I did put my push cards out there so if y'all can grab those, it'll tell you all my involvements in the community. But for the past eight years, I've been your council member. It's been my mission to fulfill the vows that I made to the citizens of Patterson, and I vowed to be your voice. And in order to be your voice, I made myself accessible, visible. I went, went to as many community events that I could go to to be able to hear from you all. I've, um, attended, uh, appointed board meetings, uh, the organizations that were appointed, like the housing board, the zoning board, uh, trying to find out what's going on to be able to represent and be a voice for you all. I visit our senior centers and listen to the center, the older people. I mentor youth through some awesome workshops that Councilman Dornell has held this, this term. Um, I want to continue to be your voice. Uh, if you drive through our city, you can see that your, your voices are being heard. Some awesome things are happening to the city, and I want to continue to be part of that movement. So I hope that y'all consider me on November 6th, '83. Now, if I have time, I'd like to say the two priorities. Uh, you know the heart, my heart is into recreational. Uh, and we just acquired a recreational facility. Uh, we just appointed an 11-member board of some energetic, enthusiastic, compassionate people that's on that board that's ready to get busy with that facility, put in some positive, uh, things there that's going to help the community as a whole. So that's one of the top priorities, and I think my time was running out.
Now, for our first round of questions provided by the public, each candidate will have two minutes to respond. Candidate number one, if you could change one thing in the town's zoning code, what would it be and why?
Oh, that's a good question. Can I get that to Travis? No. Um, I, um, we have properties in the city of Patterson, and I've been shying away from this because this directly affects my family members. And I never did want to bring this up because I didn't want it to look like I was, I was doing this for family members. But as I spoke to citizens of Patterson and as I ride the city, we have properties where, um, you can only put a relative in a mobile home on your property. And, um, and what happens is these relatives lived there when they're young, and then they get older, they get degrees, or they move on like John said, because that's where their job takes them. And those lots are, are stagnant now. We, you can't do anything with them. You can't put another resident in that, uh, in, on that property. So that would be one thing that, uh, that I think we're going to entertain it. It came up before. Uh, I may have been confused at that because they said I voted no for that, and I'm like, whoa, wow. Uh, so I'm going to re, I'm going to entertain that again. I see the mayor laughing at me down there. Uh, but we will entertain it again. We've talked about it, and, um, that would be something definitely that is going to be looked at.
Candidate number two, what is the council offering to potential businesses wanting to come to Patterson, and what would you suggest?
Okay, I'm going to say, uh, what we're offering to potential businesses who want to come to Patterson, we're offering a listening ear, and we welcome all businesses that want to come into Patterson, but I mean, we have a city charter, we have rules, and we have laws and regulations, and we have to make sure that if any business is going to come into town, that they're following all of those codes before we allow them to come into town. But I think, uh, what we're moving at now is that we want to grow the city, and we want to entertain more businesses to come into the city to help us to continue to grow and to offer them, the citizens, uh, more, so.
Candidate number three, how do you plan to involve the residents in the town's decision-making process?
Ma'am, if we continue to get the number of people to come to our city council meetings that have been coming and stay well-informed as they are, I would entirely, I would hope that we would have to add on to City Hall to, to allow more people to attend our meetings. And with that being said about the zoning and the, uh, and what Travis talked about, Patterson was voted the safest city in the state of Louisiana about two months ago. So what, as far as, uh, oh, uh, ma'am, could you please repeat that question again? I just wanted to say that.
How do you plan to involve the residents in the town's decision-making process?
Yes. By, uh, by encouraging, encouraging the... Yeah. By encouraging the citizens to attend more city council meetings, and I'm a face-to-face, eye-to-eye, hands-on person. I like to talk to people. It doesn't, while I'm making groceries or Dawn and I making groceries or whatever, she's always complaining to me about, "You stop and talk too much, the meat's getting hot." So what I, what I like to do is talk to people and get them in more involved. I think the more knowledgeable they are of what's going on in the city, the more understanding they are, the easier it is to talk to individuals and explain to them what we're doing as a whole, as a mayor, and as a council, because we all do have their very best interests at heart. Thank you.
Candidate number four, do you feel that the term limits to serve on the council are appropriate and why?
I think, I think that the, the term limits are appropriate, and the reason being is to give everyone, you know, a chance to get involved in the community at another level, though.
Candidate, candidate number five, do you believe that the council is moving in the right direction to help the city grow and why?
I would like to think so, yes. Uh, do I know that 100%? No, I don't. Um, because I haven't been behind the scenes, I don't know exactly what everything they're doing. So I would like to believe they do, and I truly believe that in their hearts, every member of this council and the mayor believes in his heart that he's doing the best thing for the city, no questions about that. Uh, but for me to tell you for a fact, I couldn't do that, not to look behind the scenes, but I do believe they do.
Candidate number six, what are your thoughts on a parish-wide consolidated government?
Hmm, I would have to do, uh, the homework on that. Uh, it's not something I wouldn't consider because I've seen consolidation done before, but I would have to get the, uh, I'm a, I guess, see it in black and white and, and kind of dissect things to really know how something would work, so I don't know exactly, you know, that much about consolidation, you know, in this form.
We will now begin our second round of questions provided by the public. You will each have two minutes to respond. Candidate number one, what is the council doing with regard to old vacant buildings causing an eyesore to the community, and how would you handle this situation?
Um, that's another good question, and, and I could tell you that, um, the council works close with the mayor and the rules of the city of Patterson, and, uh, we just recently are making progress south of the track of removing the, I think, the old Johnson, uh, Johnson Brother Building. That's been cleaned up a little bit, and we just, as a council member, you just have to follow your charter, and you, and you have to work with the administrative side and, and try to get, uh, these buildings in accordance to what the charter says should happen.
Candidate number two, what do you believe is the most important role of the council?
Uh, I believe the most important role of the council is, I pretty much stated that earlier in my address. The, the most important rule of a counselor is, uh, city councilman is first, is to, uh, we, we, we should be held responsible by the people. So the first thing, and the most important thing, is that we do the will of the people. And real quickly, I, one thing I thought about when I was coming here is that Mr. John mentioned it earlier. I don't think that, and I'm going to throw this out there to the people, I don't think that it's fair that on Tuesday nights, we get up there and we're left to make all of this, all of the decisions. I think that the most important thing is that we work closely with the citizens of Patterson, Louisiana, so that we can do the will of the people and do what they want. And I think that's the most important thing as a councilman. We're just the mediator of what the people want. It's not about, you know, exactly what we want. When you guys go out on November 6th, you're putting us here so that we can do your will. And that's the most important role of a council, is to make sure that every decision that we make is the decision that's best for the people and that we're hearing them.
Candidate number three, if elected, what would be your first item of discussion with the council?
I would like to, I would like to entertain the new council member and bring about, bring them up to sn, up to speed as far as what we have been, what we as a council have accomplished in the last four years so that we could get them to not say follow along with us, but to let them know that they are comfortable in their position. Nobody is going to belittle or, or scold them for making a decision. We all make decisions and we have discussions. That's what we do. That's what we have to do to work together.
Candidate number four, do you think the town's Moray Park and improvements on Main Street are attractive and successful ventures? What would you do to improve and/or change the area?
Well, ma'am, you know what? I'm glad you asked that question because I'm, I'm grateful to see that's going on. And, and to be honest, I'll just continue to support what they're doing. I wouldn't change anything because it's something that needed to be done for a while, and it's getting done, and I'm very pleased with that.
Candidate number five, if elected, what three steps would you take to put our town in a firm financial footing?
The first step, first step, definitely work with the council and the mayor to review budgets, uh, cost as far as operations, the police department utilities, all, all aspects of the city. I mean, that's, that's what's got to take place for a financial budget. Make sure that the money of the city is in, um, a good institution that is drawing the maximum amount of interest that we can get for it. And, uh, as far as the third thing, like I said, working, working with all the departments, making sure the city is sized the right, we have the right number of employees in each department. We don't have an excessive amount, or we don't have under. I'm not advocating getting rid of anybody by any means, but if, uh, if one department is way overstaffed, or somebody else is understaffed, um, find other jobs for them or transfer them over to a different division. But you've got to have a balance system. Thank you.
And finally, candidate number six, if you received a $1 million grant to use for the town in any way that you want, what would you do with it and why?
Ooh, what would I do with a million dollars? Spending our, our recreational facility? That would be one, seriously. Uh, and I think that facility, uh, the way we have it designed, what we're looking at is going to benefit the whole community. Uh, I would add a swimming pool to it. Um, I, just really a state-of-the-art, um, recreational facility.
In closing, each candidate will have three minutes to summarize his or her candidacy. Beginning with candidate number one, please summarize your candidacy.
In closing, I want to thank you again for allowing me to serve you as your, hello? Okay, I'm sorry. In closing, I want to thank you again for allowing me to serve you as your city councilman for the past 16 years. I have tried to the best of my ability to serve all citizens when called on to do so. I can truly say that it has been a pleasure to work with such great people. It has also been a blessing to me to serve and work with the legislative and administrative sides of government as well as the police department. Although we will never be perfect, although we will never be perfect, I am very proud of the accomplishments seen throughout the city. A new school, a new water plant, upgraded parks, increased recreational opportunities, street improvements, continued efforts for better drainage, increased economic development, and the list goes on and on and on. I'm also pleased with the proactive police discussions we recently had to make our city safer. I'm a lifelong resident of Patterson by choice. There's nothing more than I want for our citizens and my family than to There's nothing more than I want for our citizens and my family than to come home to a clean and safe community. If elected, I will continue to work with the people, the mayor, the council, and the police department in making Patterson a place we can all proudly call our home. Thank you.
Uh, in closing, what I would like to say is, again, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity, uh, to serve over the past four years and I want to continue to do the things that we've been doing over the past four years and I want to go over and beyond what we've done. So, I would like for you guys to give me another opportunity to serve you for an additional four years and vote seventy-nine on November the sixth, thank you.
Thank y'all for sitting here and listening to us. I would like to continue on and finish the projects that we have in, initiated in my last eight years and I would like to continue other projects as well. As you well know, streets are a constant issue to everybody that lives behind the front door and they all have to drive on those streets and some of them are not up to snuff. But with continued work with these council, with the parish, with the mayor, I think that we can accomplish and make things a lot more comfortable than what they are. Uh, in closing, my number is eighty-one on the ballot, John Rentrout, and I would appreciate everyone's support. Thank you very much.
Uh, first of all, I wanted to say that, um, earlier with the two questions about, I gave the two things that I would like to see, but what, I didn't tell you what I liked I would do concerning those two things, but I mentioned as far as, um, you know, the policeman, uh, community, bonded, uh, um, community, um, effort working together, bonding, and what I wanted to say about that is how I would go by doing that is, you know, every now and again, get the, um, policemen to go out and just, you know, do a walk, uh, throughout the community, talking and just trying to build that relationship between the officers and the community themselves. And that way, you know, you see a policeman, you don't have to run or whatever the thing is, maybe I'll get scared, but that you can actually relate to them. And as far as the business was concerned, you know, building, I continue to support the mayor and see what I can do as far as, you know, um, getting, um, people to call and, uh, be a part of the, of this city of Patterson. And, and my closing on tonight, I, I want to really thank everyone for coming out, but my thing is, as far as the council is concerned, I want to make history. As far as I know, I would be the first pa, uh, pastor that has, have se, have, um, to be seated on the city council. And so, what that would also bring is give me an opportunity to minister to the Christian base as well, to get them involved, because I don't think there's enough churches involved in the community. The mayor, the council, they need our help, not just, you know, um, pastoring behind the four walls, but getting out and being involved in the community. That's, that's, and that's why I think I would be a major asset to the, um, Patterson City Council. Um, also involved in community events now, our church is, uh, we're one of the churches that actually do community events from two to three times a year, where we give back clothing, we feed, you know, we minister to people, getting involved and meeting them, getting involved, not just happen, hap, happen to, uh, people, people don't just have to come to church to see me, I'm involved in the community. And in closing, once again, I sincerely believe, like I told you before, that it's very important to be involved in our community organizations, because what happens, it allows us, amen, allow me to learn the different aspects of various group. We all need to participate and work together as helping others and, uh, contributing to the continued progress of this city, all right? I am Lee Acondo, number seventy-eight on your ballot, a man of integrity and a man that has a servant heart.
Once again, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Uh, I was so nervous in the opening round that I forgot to mention my wife and my two kids. I'm married to Michelle Seneca Piku, I have two beautiful daughters, Taylor Piku and Caitlin Piku. Michelle and I have been married twenty-four years, um, loving wife, no questions about it, very supportive and in this adventure, I, I call it adventure because I think it's gonna be very challenging going forward, uh, I have a hundred percent support for my family, my mother, my father, um, no questions about it. I'm a definite commitment person, if I give you my commitment, then I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do my utmost best to make sure that commitment is fulfilled, no questions about it. Once again, thank you, my name's William Piku Junior and I'm number eighty on the ballot and I humbly ask for your support.
I'm asking for your vote. Why I'm asking for your vote, I'm gonna just share a little conversation that I had with a young man, uh, first-time voter, and his question was, what is the role of the city council? And, uh, which was an awesome question for a young man to ask, you know, not knowing what the role is and wanting to know because he was casting his vote. Um, so I went on to answer the question and I want to share, share with you all, so you know what you, you, what we supposed to do as a councilperson. Uh, we are five individuals that are elected by you guys, uh, to work with the mayor and our job is to advise, discuss all concerns, complaints, ideas, laws, ordinances, resolutions for the city. After our discussion, the mayor would make a recommendation and the recommendations is either voted on or agreed upon. We are the voices for you all that elected us. I went on to tell him that it's a big responsibility and I take it seriously. You know, if he wanted a, a council member that's the voice for the people, who's accessible, transparent, who has, uh, attended, I don't know how many workshops, just to get to know what I can bring back to the community to, uh, make our city a better place. Um, I'm involved in the community, uh, I make myself, like I said, I'm visible, so being that way, I can be your voice. You can, you, if there's a community event, I'm there. Um, I told him I was elected eight years ago and I can truly say that our city has come a long way, a very long way. We have our, our streets are being repaired, new businesses are coming to our city, uh, we replaced a sixty-something year old water plant, uh, sewer lines and gas lines are being put in place for future development, community events and youth workshops are being held, and we just acquired a recreational facility that I know will bring a big, big plus to our city. Our city is a, is alive and well and I want to continue to be part of that awakening. So, I'm asking for you to vote for our council, like our mayor say, that does her homework and who has a compassion and a love for her city. So, vote eighty-three, November the sixth, I can't do it without you. Thank y'all and God bless.
Thank you all for your participation, you may now be seated in the audience.